Mrs. Seidel, all set?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us this afternoon and this evening for our special meeting Board Retreat. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Sugars for role call.
Mrs. Seidel, all set?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us this afternoon and this evening.
Ms. Arroyo? Ms. Arroyo?
She's going to be a minute or two late, Mrs. Sugars.
Okay, sorry. Ms. Freidell?
Present.
Mr. Goodwin?
Here.
Mrs. Matlack?
Here.
Mrs. Neary?
Here.
Mr. Avadia?
Here.
Mrs. Schultz? Mrs. Tong? Mrs. Seidel?
Here. Okay, so I am going to turn it over to Dr. Malash to kick us off for our goals discussion, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Seidel. It's nice to see everyone from what I can see as we're on here. We do have some people with us that are joining us online. So every year, the Board of Education is tasked with coming up with goals that will direct some of the work of the school district. We track these goals during the course of the year, monitor what goes on, and they get reported out on through the board committees, through sometimes the full board meeting, and we do a full review at the end of the academic year. So there's been a lot of discussion about our goals, how we structure them. We have some new folks on the board this year. So we kind of wanted to take a step back a little bit about what the process is, what do they look like? And I know that some of the board members had some questions about how we form the goals. In one sense, we are a little bit farther ahead this year because in February, the board did adopt three strategic planning goals that will guide the district from 2020 through 2025. And just an aside, we have run meetings in the past where we've all been, the three of us have been in the room together at the table socially distanced, not wearing masks. But the governor made an announcement earlier today that will impact all schools about that there are no mask breaks, that masks must be worn inside at all times. So tonight, in the boardroom, it's just me and Mrs. Sugars. We both have our masks on as we will update our plan for returning to school. All right, so on Thursday evening, I posted a number of documents for the board members to look at, to see, and to start to go through to look at what our goals were last year. And I gave a number of previous years for what goals look like in Cherry Hill. I also gave some other school districts, some examples here in South Jersey, from other places in the state about what their goal documents are and what they look like. So I just wanted to kind of start out, Mrs. Seidel, and see if people at board members have any specific questions about process, direction, you know, that kind of thing.
Sounds good. I will go around the room, and I'll start with Mr. Goodwin and Mrs. Matlack since they've been through this process quite a few times. So maybe they can shed some light for some of the newer folks. So Mr. Goodwin?
Sure, I can. I don't have any questions regarding the goals. But the idea is that each year, as we do, as Dr. Malash mentioned, we do need to make sure that we're setting goals and goals that are hopefully going to be, number one, easily measurable; but number two, also stretch goals and goals that are attainable. And the challenge is really how you go about setting measurable goals, especially in a school setting, and it not just be simply tied to some kind of standard test score kind of numbers, those kind of things. There are other ways of doing measurable things in terms of, I know, one year. And I think that might be in one of the lists where we talked about reducing the disparity between the number of out-of-school suspensions for African-American and kids of color versus, you know, the general population. And so that was one of the goals. But I think as we move forward, we do need to just really look at our district and look at where we want to be and really set about and say, well, where do we want to be as a district? And then set about from there to determine what our goals need to be. That's just my take on it.
Thank you, Eric. Mrs. Matlack?
Thank you. Yeah, I haven't been on the board as long as Mr. Goodwin. He's been on a few years longer than I have. But over the years that I have been on the board, I've seen the approach to our goals change. But like Mr. Goodwin said, you know, even though, you know, we possibly may have gotten into, you know, more of the minutia, it was with the idea that we wanted to have measurable outcomes to make sure that we were working towards those goals and hopefully, at some point, attaining them. Because the goals tend to be overarching and are not something that are easily attainable in one year. So, you know, we have goals, and then we have steps to attain that. And hopefully, we are doing that. But I think that sometimes it's easy to get bogged down in the minutia of those steps to attain the goals. And I think, you know, we need to, you know, maybe take a little broader look at what the goal is that we want or the goals that we want for the district for the year and how can we measurably see progress towards those goals. Easier said than done, as you can see by the documents that Dr. Malash sent us, how different districts approach it and how our district and different boards over the years have approached it. You know, so that's just been my experience. And I agree with Mr. Goodwin about the key is focusing on measurable attainments to the goals that we set out for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Matlack. Mrs. Tong, do you have any comments or questions to kick off our process?
Lisa, I believe she messaged that she was going to be late. Did she join already?
Well, she texted me that she was joining, so, or that I thought that she had joined. So I'll come back to her. Mrs. Arroyo?
I think she's just coming in. I think I recognized the number. There was just a door.
Okay, thanks. Mrs. Arroyo?
Hi, thank you. I, you know, I agree with what Eric and Carol said. Also adding, just as we look at the bigger picture and identifying goals that are, one, I would see along with our strategic plan, but incorporating some of the goals that maybe our community has identified throughout the whole process and definitely breaking some of them down further and since we're doing this on a year-by-year snapshot in short, and I guess within the task, doing short-term, intermediate, and the long-term year that then ends in the three-year plan, three-year, four-year strategic outlook for the district. So finding a way to have tangible, measurable goals attached to everything that we've been talking about with our new vision for the school district. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Freidell?
Yes, thank you. So, hold on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can, thank you.
Sorry. So I had the opportunity to go to the school board's weekend new board member training, and they spent some time on the goal setting, which is why I guess I do have some, you know, some clarifying questions. So as Dr. Malash noted, we have already set the district goals, but now we need to address the board goals and I guess also the personal goals for the superintendent. And based on what I was shared at that meeting, to be effective in setting the goals, we should be using data to inform our and then from the data recommend three to five relevant, attainable, and measurable annual district goals, or they can be multi-year. And then the superintendent would create action plans based on those goals. So what I'm really looking to do is look at the data and then using that data come up with the goals that we want to set for the board for the year.
Thanks. Thank you, Mrs. Freidell.
Thank you.
Mr. Avadia?
Yes, thank you. Yes. I guess I wanted to clarify. I agree on the notion of SMART goals, for sure. And I definitely think, you know, I think part of the, I think, you know, there's an art and a science to it. And I think part of that art is figuring out, you know, how do we structure these things? You know, there are so many themes of things we've talked about for a good long time, you know, that are, in many ways, good guides. I do think in this process, one of the things that's cool about it is that, much like strategic planning, that vision teaches that you don't constantly need to think about 100 things we want to do, but what are the big, you know, three to five that we really want to track? And then, you know, how do we know when we've gotten it? How do we know when we've missed it? How do we look at it, you know, maybe quarterly, monthly, whatever it is, to figure out, all right, you know, what additional would be helpful here? I guess my question on the process in terms of, so this is a split session. We're going to be doing this twice. I guess, just in terms of like, today, are we kind of like talking about the big picture and kind of what elements we'd like and then really narrowing that down in the next session? Or do we split the work up differently? Is that the idea? And I guess, I guess the other thing is, are we sort of, do we? It seems like we are. I just wanted to verify, do we need to, over these two sessions, really get to something definitive? Or can we be close? You know, how does that, these work? I guess are my opening questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Avadia. And Mrs. Neary?
Yes, thank you. For me, and I guess Gwen couldn't make it to these sessions to kind of help guide, to me, which seems kind of like a whiteboarding exercise. I agree with what everyone has said regarding the three to five goals being measurable so we have a way to track, you know, progress. And the ability, I think, I agree with what's been said previously regarding, you know, reviewing them more frequently versus just at the end of the year to see how we're tracking. I mean, at minimum, I think, you know, most reviews are at least twice in the year, that, you know, the middle and then the end to see, you know, how the performance is tracked, I think is important. I think obviously, one of the goals for me that makes most sense and is kind of the number one goal for any district is the achievement of its students and perhaps the most important. So I think that's a great jumping off point. I don't know the process as far as, you know, agreeing with Ben on what we want to achieve within this session and then what we are looking to achieve in the second session. Because I was hopeful that school boards was going to join and kind of help guide and walk through what that process looks like. So hopefully, we can get to that. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Neary. So the only thing that I'll add is an analogy that when I attended my very first school board trainings that had stuck with me over the years. And it kind of ties into a little bit about what Mrs. Matlack was saying about how to try and stay focused and, you know, and keep the conversation at the level that's appropriate for the board. And I've shared this with many of you over the years. You know, the board's role is sort of the comment, let there be light. And then administration's role is, you know, how are we going to make that light happen? Are we going to use a match? Are we going to use a bonfire? Are we going to use a light bulb? So I always try and keep that analogy in the back of my mind when we're planning for big things like goals. And it helps me stay focused. So I'm just sharing that. I know that I've shared that a lot over the years. But that is, that is one thing that I took from my board, my New Jersey School Board Association trainings that has really stuck with me over the years. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Malash, who can sort of answer some of the questions and talk us a bit through the process. And like everyone else, I agree, I think today is more of the bigger-picture discussion about what we think are our most critical goals. And I'm in complete agreement with Mrs. Neary that the number one goal in my mind is our student achievement. And then from there, our second session would be more sort of refining that. And then the final step is administration sort of writing, you know, writing them out and pulling all that information together into the actual goals based on these conversations. So with that, Dr. Malash, I'm going to turn it over to you to answer some of the questions about process and some of the other questions that were asked by the board members.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Seidel. Mrs. Seidel, I do think that Mrs. Tong has joined us. I don't know whether you wanted to come back to see if she wanted to?
Terrific, yes, absolutely. Thank you for letting me know that she is joined. Mrs. Tong, do you have any comments or questions before we kick off our goal-setting discussion?
No, not right now, maybe later. But right now, I don't.
Okay, thank you all for your comments. I do appreciate it. I just think it's important, right? So we have an understanding of where we are and what it is that we are doing. I do think Mrs. Seidel kind of outlined, you know, process-wise, at least that we are manipulating this year, which is our discussion tonight. We'll have an additional discussion next Tuesday in August the 11th, I believe, at 4:00 again, you know, is when we are scheduled to be together prior to the regular outset of the board meeting. So we'll do that on the 11th. And on the 11th, and again, some of it depends upon how far we get in the discussion today, we can prepare a draft, you know, some that are more clarified or more pointed in terms of the direction that we want to go or that we're going to go based on some feedback we received this afternoon from the board. And then ultimately, we'll look to have them adopted, you know, by the end of September would be the goal. Certainly, the sooner we have goals adopted, the sooner we can provide that information, provide the direction to the schools and the principals and, you know, which is, I think, always beneficial for the opening of an academic year. So let me just go.
Dr. Malash?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt you for one second? Just a quick clarification or correction. We are going to meet after the board meeting for session number two.
After the board meeting, okay.
Yes, to assist for those board members that are working because the 4:00 time frame was difficult. So we were going to try and do an early and a late so that everybody could join.
So we'll have that discussion following the, on the 11th. Last item. Looking over at Mrs. Sugars' through her office is how we schedule all the meetings. So. See if there's any other measurable outcomes. Yes. Some folks talked about perspectives, you know, what's being looked at in the community, short-term and long-term goals, those that we are doing. I did have, because student achievement always has to be a primary focus. And as you went through the goals that we have used as a school district, you know, and again, tried to give you a sample over the last 15 years or so, and they typically were broken down in a number of different areas. Three of those areas have been relatively consistent during that time. One on student achievement, one that typically deals with budgeting and maintenance and finance and that kind of thing, and one that typically deals with communication and interaction with different stakeholders, and for lack of a better term, hearing voices, you know, that exist within our community. The strategic planning goals that the board adopted in February take that in a little bit of a different direction, which I think is beneficial to us. And again, those are the overarching goals, you know, that we are looking at for the next five years. So consequently, you know, at least administratively, we're looking at that planning process of encompassing those three overarching goals. And then what sort of actions are we taking this year that tie into those three goals? And what direction shall we go? I did ask Mrs. Schmidt-Sadwin to join us. Many of you, or all of you at this point have heard Val present. Typically, she does the testing report. She is the expert in the analysis of the numbers. She is an actuary by training. We are incredibly fortunate that Val is on our team here. Val is the, is from the Office of Research and Assessment, which at one time had many other people that were in that department. Now it's Val and Dave Holmgren, who is a, trying to think what her actual title is. She's an 11-months?
Testing coordinator.
Say it again? Testing coordinator. Yes, thank you, Karen. So I asked Val to join us tonight. I'm going to share my screen so you can see what Val's going to talk through. And then I will also share this document with the board after the meeting this evening. So give me a second, Mrs. Sadwin, until you can see this on your screen.
Okay, I see it. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Yes, Val, before you start, can everybody see? The chart at the top say analysis 2017 through 2019 demographic information?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, Val.
So Joe, what I'm going to, Dr. Malash, what I'm going to do is basically work through this document. And my prompts are page numbers. So hopefully, we'll get into sync on when we are going to turn the page.
Yes, ma'am.
So first of all, just as an introduction, my understanding was that the board wanted to see test results comparing Eastside Schools and Westside Schools. And so with that request, first, you have to identify what the Eastside Schools are. And here, I'm just kind of like going off the top. You can stay where you are. I'm just talking. There's nothing on the document that you need to see at this point. So the question are, what are the Eastside Schools and what are the Westside Schools? And the easy answers are High School East and Beck are Eastside Schools. High School West and Carusi are Westside Schools. Rosa is both east and west. So that's how I have it. I've color-coded the graphs that you're about to see based on High School East and High School West school colors. So the Eastside graphs, the Eastside Schools are going to be red, and the Westside Schools are going to be purple. And Rosa, since it cannot be considered east or west, I gave it a color code of blue because I like blue, and it's a nice color. For the elementary schools, and so for the high schools and the middle schools, I was able to show by school results. But for the elementary schools, because of the small populations, you need to group them so that their subgroups have enough N size that we can display data and that we can actually look at it and analyze it. So for the elementary schools, the Eastside and the Westside was based on the districted sending school for the middle school. So for the Eastside Elementary Schools, we have Cooper, Hart, Mann, Sharp, Stockton, and Woodcrest, very, very clear. For the Westside Schools, we have Barton, Kilmer, Kingston, Knight, and Payne. So then we have Johnson, which is our split school. Johnson is an Eastside school. It sends far more students to Beck than Carusi. In 2019, Johnson sent 45 students to Beck, 10 students to Carusi, and 25 to Rosa. So I have Johnson as an Eastside school. So that's just kind of the background. Then, if we want to see Eastside and Westside test scores, we must put that in context by first looking at the different makeups of the Eastside and Westside testing populations. And here, you're perfect. You're right where I needed to be, Joe, Dr. Malash.
Joe's fine, though.
So what I found, and you'll see the graphs in a moment, was most striking were the differences in percentages of economically disadvantaged students between the Eastside and the Westsides. The Westside has higher percentages of Black or African-American students and Hispanic students than the Eastside. The percentage of economically disadvantaged students is disproportionately Black and African-American and Hispanic students. And the Westside Schools have more students who have been in the district for less than three years than the Eastside Schools. So we'll see graphs just describing the population. So those are, that's my executive summary for the testing population. For the test results, and I'm reading a book on data display, and the person who wrote the book would be very unhappy with this table because of the colors. I'm still going with a red, yellow, green color. And the author of the book says, colorblind people cannot see this. So at some point, I will come, I do apologize right now, but at least there are words in here for anyone who might be red-green colorblind. I will at some point come up with a different color scheme for tables in the future. But right now, I wanted a visual. So for English Language Arts and Mathematics, a visual so you can see, well, overall, how do we do, by school, how do we do? And by subgroup, how do we do? And ED is economically disadvantaged, and SWD is Students with Disability. And in looking at this, I note you can see immediately that more subgroups saw improvement than didn't see improvement. High School West wins the school prize for all subgroups being the same or up in both ENL and math. And the Students with Disabilities wins the subgroup prize with all schools being the same or up in both ELA and math in that particular subgroup. So moving on to page two, we're going to start looking at the population graphs. And I do, and Dr. Malash, has this been shared with the board? Or because if this has been shared with the board, the background for the demographics study is basically not that interesting, but a nice reference to just?
The document hasn't yet valid, will be this afternoon after meeting.
So I'm going to, like, so basically here, the background for the demographics study at this point for the total population, it just explains what I explained before. What are the Eastside Schools and what are the Westside Schools? Moving on to, right, the economically disadvantaged, I put this first because these are where I found the most striking differences in the percentages of the Eastside Schools and the Westside Schools. And that there is a much higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students on the Westside than the Eastside. The next graph, page three, are the race and ethnicity. And here, you'll see, and you go by student groups, you'll see high school at the top, then middle school, and then the next page will be, or I think lower is elementary school. And here, basically, there's a higher percentages of Black or African-American students and Hispanic students on the Westside than the Eastside. Going to page four, of the Students with Disabilities, the Students with Disabilities are growing, but they're fairly consistent percentages among the schools and the school groups. Going down, lower on the page, on this page, I wanted to try and get a feel for these special population groups being Students with Disabilities and Economically Disadvantaged. I wanted to see if they were proportionate to the total population. Because if they're fairly proportionate, then when you're seeing the gaps in the special groups and the Student with Disabilities and Economically Disadvantaged groups, then you're basically seeing proportional gaps. But if one But if one group is overrepresented, then the gaps that you're seeing, say, in the economically disadvantaged, and then you see the gaps in the, the ethnic, racial categories, there's a lot of overlap. And what I saw here was Students with Disabilities was a bit out of line, but economically disadvantaged is very heavily Black or Hispanic. It really does not follow the, the total population distribution. So when you're seeing the gaps in the economically disadvantaged and when you're seeing the gaps in the bi-ethnic and racial groups, a lot of these are the same kids, could be the same kids and there could be overlap here. Then go on.
Val, quick question.
Yes.
Quick question. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't, I didn't quite follow that last line of reasoning. Could you, could you go through that again?
Well, I think, so I, I am having trouble, again, and actually I've had trouble in the report too. But, but, so since the economic, since right here, we're seeing, you can clearly see that the economically disadvantaged is, Black and Hispanic group has almost 45% of the economically disadvantaged and yet only has 20, 22, 20, whatever, of the population. Whereas it's in the reverse for the Asian, white, and two races group. So, you know, the question is, has been, I think, forever-
So is that the gap you're referring to? I don't know what-
No, no, no. This is, this is, this is not a gap at this point. This is just to testing population. I wanted to, so we're not talking overlap, we're talking about, are these groups proportional? And so the question, like, from, for, for decades and decades, ever since I've been doing this, is, well, is it that, you know, economically disadvantaged students, okay, there's all sorts of reasons why economically disadvantaged students may not be doing as well as those who are not economically disadvantaged. And then you have numerous cases where, and in our district as well, Black and Hispanic are not doing as well as the white or Asian. Well, the question is, you know, how much overlap is there? How much of the kids that are struggling are part of that same group? And so if, if it was all proportional, then I, you would not, you know, feel that there was as much overlap. But since here we have, it's so heavily, the economically disadvantaged is so heavily Black or Hispanic out of align with the total population, that the gaps you're seeing, there may be, you know, there probably is some overlap and, and they're the same kids. If, to some extent. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I think I understand now. So, so basically, you're, you're just saying that there's always been an issue regarding economically disadvantaged and that, and that being one of the driving factors around achievement. So you're saying that Blacks and Hispanics are overrepresented amongst the economically disadvantaged group? And that, that as far as, you know, that, that being one of the, one of the factors that's been constantly kind of brought up when it comes to opportunity gaps in terms of achievement?
Yes, thank you. You said it better than I did. And I've been struggling for a good part of the day with this.
That's a really good summary, Erin.
That's exactly what I mean. Okay, so we're moving down to page five. And here, we were trying to get a feeling for the difference in transients of students between the East Sides and the West Sides. And so basically, again, and this is total population, you know, these are population graphs, yeah, graphs. These are not gaps graphs. These are just looking at the population, trying to figure out what we have. And you can see that the West Side has proportionately more students who have been in the district fewer than three years, meaning that they're getting more newer students than the East Side. And the biggest difference is, well, how many kids does this mean? The biggest difference would be between Rosa and Carusi, wherein if you want a count of students, in 2019, Rosa had 29 students who had been in the district fewer than three years. All the rest of the 800 kids were in the district for three or more years. Whereas Carusi had 171 who were in the district for fewer than three years. So there is a transient situation too of students coming, coming and going from different areas. So moving on to page six, yeah, the, I think that you know all the background there. I am looking at level four or five because those, those are the passing levels for the NJSLA. I am looking at the NJSLA for ELA and math for 2017 to 2019. I did exclude 2016 because the participation was so bad in the first year of the PAR test. So that's basically what we're looking at. And so we, we've got pages six through eights, which are going to show the exhibits by school groups. And you'll be able to see the magnitude of the gaps and whether there's improvement or not. So the first page here, page six, we have the high school. And basically, what I see from the, and so you can see, it, it will look better in the document that's shared because East and West is on the same page. And you'll be able to see that absolutely East scores are higher than West scores. But I think what you'll also see is that the West has improved in all subgroups from 2017. Not where we want them to be. We would like, of course, them to, you know, be higher, but they are improving, which is, is a good thing. Moving on to the next page, we see the, the middle schools. And again, this is probably even going to be more difficult, but it is all on one page. You'll be able to see Beck, Carusi, and Rosa. Rosa's has the highest percentages in all subgroup and Carusi does have the lowest. And Beck improved in all subgroups except for white students. Then going to the elementary schools with my East-West split based on sending districts. And what struck me was that the results between the East Side and the West Side really aren't all that different between the two school groups. The West Side was the same or showed improvement in, in all groups, which that was a good And then the next page is page nine, we have the economically disadvantaged students. And I put a vertical line on this graph. So basic, so here, what you're seeing in color are the results of the economically disadvantaged group, students. And so it was Dr. Mahan that said, well, okay, that's fine, Val, but, you know, what's the, what is the non-economically disadvantaged group? And to try and, you know, come up with a graph that had both, I felt would be really, really cluttered. Oh, that's nice, Dr. Malasch. I came up with the district average for 2019 of the students who are not economically disadvantaged. So hopefully this will help you kind of get an, an idea of the gap of the students who are economically disadvantaged versus the results of the students who are not economically Okay, and then moving to, okay, so for the economically damaged, East-Rosa, economically disadvantaged, East-Rosa and the West Side elementary schools had the highest percentages. Sorry, I was a little slow with that one. And then East-West, East Side elementary schools and West Side elementary schools all showed progress from 2017. Then move, now moving on to page nine, sorry about that, Students with Disability. This graph is basically set up similar to the economically disadvantaged graph. And here you'll see all schools did show improvement from 2017 to 2019. Then we move on to the math results. And they're all parallel exhibits. Here we'll see that the East percentages are higher than the West percentages in all race and ethnicity groups. The West percentages, though, did improve in all groups. And except for the two or more races, and actually I need to explain it, and I don't know why I bring it up here, and I forgot to bring it up in, in the ELA. For West 2017, there were not enough students in the subgroup to display, not yet, to display. So that's why I'm only displaying 2018 and 2019 because it, it was fewer than 10 for West. And so, you know, for everything except two or more races, you can see that West did improve for the, by race and ethnicity in every subgroup. Okay. Moving on to the next page, in the middle schools. Beck and Rosa have the highest percentages of students at levels four and five. And all of Beck's groups have higher percentage students at level four and five from 2017. Then moving to the elementary schools, again, the differences between the East Side and the West Side elementary schools aren't all that different overall, with the exception of the Asian or Pacific Islanders. The Asian or Pacific Islander students' results are significantly higher on the East Side group. But for the other, the other subgroups, they're very comparable between the East Side and the West Side. Then moving on, math, economically disadvantaged, the East-Rosa and West Side elementary schools had the highest percentages of students with levels four and five. And all school and school groups showed progress from 2017 except Carusi and Rosa. And there again, I put my vertical line of the students who are not economically disadvantaged from 2019, the district average. Students with disabilities, again, the, the vertical line shows the 2019 district average of students without disabilities who were level four or five. And here, all schools had the same or showed improvement in percentages of students with levels four and five from 2017. So that's, that's the data. I hope I interpreted what was requested properly and that this will help you in your discussions for goal setting.
Thank you, Val.
I have a question.
Anybody have any questions for Val while she's with us?
I, I do. And if I'm looking at correctly, the, we're seeing like an increase overall, mostly in these categories, but I still see like a smaller percentage rate increase between Black and Hispanic and, I'm trying to see, versus their, versus their counterparts, right? So while there has been an increase, there is a slower rate. Am I right in looking at that correctly?
And is, is there a particular-
A smaller increase.
That will be true among subgroups. That will be true among schools, depending on, you know, the different school that you're looking at or the different, the, the different school or the, the different subgroup that you're looking at. But sometimes that is the case and sometimes they increase more than others. Did I, did I answer that?
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. I guess it's just more about now, I guess, looking at it from the different schools' perspective and, and that, I guess, from that one.
I have some questions. So I guess it's Laurie. My first question would be, how much are they up year over year? So if you start with 2017, what percentage would you say it was up by in 2018 and then 19? And then what is the margin of error? What is the percent margin of error on the analysis?
Okay, so basically, you do have the percentages up at the top. And I, I wanted-
Yeah, I can't see it, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So the document, the document will have the percentages up at the top. If anyone wants tables of numbers, I just thought that the visual, the graph was more, the, the graph was easier to kind of get a, at least it is for me. A, a graph is easier for me to take a look and see what's happening rather than table after table after table of numbers. But if anyone wants to see the raw data because, oh, it does look like a little, well, is it one percentage point, is it a half percentage point, or is it two percentage points? And that's important. I certainly have, I can put together tables of numbers for anyone who wants them. As far as the margin of error, the margin of error is really going to vary by N-count, by standard deviation. It is going to be different for every subgroup, every school, every category. And I have not calculated that and I don't know for sure whether I would be able to calculate that.
I don't think you can, Val, at least not in a way that would be consistent and reasonable from a research perspective.
I, I would tend to agree with that. I mean, I, I wouldn't even know where to begin. And I think, you know, it would really require a technical study from the state as far as what the standard deviations and we would be talking about by different subgroups. And then it, it, you know, it's been a long time since I've done any sort of statistical analysis like that. So I, I, I punt.
Okay. And then my other question would be, the 171 students at Carusi, out of how many total students are there at Carusi versus total students at Rosa?
Dr. Malasch may know better off the heads. My, my, I'm going like just under 1,000. I think recently it's been between 950 and 1,000 at Carusi. Is that still right?
Yes. And then Rosa is relatively consistent at-
800. It's like, it's always between like 780 and 800 because they have, you know, the, the specific slots.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, Ms. Sadwin. I appreciate the presentation. So, Dr. Malasch, my question is, is really for you, sort of keeping that analogy that I keep in my head at all times. So the board has said over the past years, and it sounds like this is top of mind for all of us again this year, is that we want to work on closing the achievement gap. And it's, it's critically important for us. So my question to you is, seeing this data and knowing what we know, what is administration's recommendation for, you know, what, what have you guys been talking about as you're thinking about discussing goals with the board for 2020, 2021?
So administratively, we believe that, that focusing attention on achievement gaps is something that we have to continue to do. In fact, whether it's listed specifically as one of the board goals or not, it will still occupy a great deal of attention in terms of what goes on in building-based goals and the work that Dr. Mahan and the Critical Instruction Office, Mrs. Weddington and People's Services folks, building principals, you know, in, in terms of what we look at. But I think one of the values of what Val- But I think one of the values of what Val showed to us is, is one, you know, and this is why I like the graphs, especially looking at it with a group, a mixed group like we are right now, because you can get a pretty good visual representation. And again, I will send this out so the board can go through it, you know, before our meeting next week, but a pretty good visual representation, you know, to see in the big picture where things are. I also think that it's, it's interesting to note that there has been some closing and narrowing of what some of those gaps are in some of the schools, you know, in terms of programmatically, some of the things that the schools have done. I think it is a challenge, you know, we all feel a bit of a level of frustration that there's no data from 1920 that fits in and ties in with this because of the assessment program. Not that I think we should be jumping back in to do more state assessments at all. I think there's other ways that we can measure kids and what we can look at, but there absolutely has to be a focus. We believe, you know, in terms of what the board adopts, that there has to be a focus on looking at the achievement gaps or the opportunity gaps, which are real, you know, they are real things. And I appreciate the board members over the last couple of weeks that have talked about the difference between an achievement gap and an opportunity gap. You know, and that's why we asked Val to go through and talk about the different subgroups. And economically disadvantaged is such a significant one to look at, you know, because foundationally, that's where the opportunity gap often exists. It's not about race or ethnicity, or caring about education, but often it's about the economic piece that exists. So there has to be a piece in there. You know, when you look at the three strategic planning goals, there are places within those goals to put some specific focus on the experience that the children are having and how we're going to measure what their success is.
Ben, I had a couple of questions for Ms. Sadwin.
Yes.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Avadia.
So I just wanted to try to be, you know, this is a lot, and this is great work. I appreciate all of this analysis and work. I think for me, there are two things when it comes to achievement. One has to do with disparities in achievement, right? As we look internally and we say, look, you know, this versus this within our realm of kind of control within our district. But I think there's a second level of overall achievement, right? Against our 570 peers in the state of New Jersey, that may have very different makeups, demographics, you know, challenges, opportunities. But how do we stack up against those over time? And I think, Ms. Sadwin, if I understood, that was not the focus of this study, that would be a different study to, to kind of think about. But it's one that I, if I've understood it correctly, that one I think would have some merit. The second thing I think that I'm seeing in the data and the description, I'm more of an auditory learner, I guess, is that at an elementary school level, we have less on the East-West disparity than we do middle and high schools. And I just want to make sure I've understood that, because it may pave the way for kind of a focus going forward, perhaps. And the third thing is, and I hear what Dr. Malasch is saying, and I'm kind of curious, I mean, we kind of start, it sounds like the analysis starts out in different subcategories and then tries to adjust for the economic disparities. If we looked at our at-promise students in isolation, in other words, adjusting for all the other factors of demographics, I guess, it's possible that that's in the report and I just have, have to kind of study it visually, but I, it's something I'd definitely like to see in terms of, you know, taking everything else out and looking at that at-promise, that opportunity gap for that group irrespective of the other variables, just to see if that points in any direction. So those are sort of the three things I'm thinking about. And I don't know if there's, if I've gotten anything wrong, I just, if you would let me know. But otherwise, those three things are what I'm thinking about.
And Mr. Avadia, tell me just one more time with looking at the economically disadvantaged kids, what is it that you're asking about to see?
Oh, I'm trying, I'm trying to see like overall from an East-West or from an overall, you know, in terms of how these things are measured, what just, just that population is looking at. And that may be in the slides, it may very well be there. But just in terms of like that measure against, you know, what the, what the solid line would be overall.
Okay. Thank you.
I have another question.
Lisa, it's Carol. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Carol. I'll come back, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I just had, had two things. One tied in with what Ben mentioned, the fact that the, the difference in East-West elementary schools is not as great as when we get to the middle and the high schools. And so, and perhaps I missed this in there as well, and ties in with what Ben was asking, you know, are there, is there more of an influx of students who are coming and therefore more, a greater percentage of students who are here three years or less in the middle and high school? And is that population a little more stable in the elementary schools? And then the, the other part is that when Val was talking about the growth at West, seeing these graphs, Val, were, was extremely helpful to formulate this question. The gap in, in the achievement at West seems to have gotten wider faster than the growth that we're seeing year over year. I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. The, the growth is happening slowly, but the gap seems to be widening at a much greater speed than that, than that growth is happening. And for me, I'm not sure, I would like, I'd like to know why, you know? Does that tie into something in one of the graphs that, that you've shown us that I just didn't pick up on yet? Or is that a deeper dive into this data or maybe some other data that we haven't seen? That's all I had.
Okay, should I try to answer this now? So I should have taken better notes. So for the elementary schools between the East, East side and the West side, I, it was, I won't say surprising, but it was very interesting to me that the, that the gap there, or there was not that much of a gap there, where it does seem to increase at the middle school level and then at the high school level, that I would agree with that also. And is the gap growing of between East and West? I can see that, yes. So even though West is, well, actually, no, I won't say that. West is increasing in all subgroups, and East is not increasing in all subgroups. So there are some cases where the gap between East and West are going in different directions, and that the gap is closing. And then there are some places where both East and West are improving. But the gap, there's still, doubtless, there is a big gap between high school East and high school West. As far as looking into what is causing that, I guess that answered it.
That's more beyond Val.
Yes, I realize, I realize that. And Val, I did not expect you to give me a quick answer to that. But seeing, seeing the data that you presented and the charts, to me, just, just showed that, that just came through loud and clear, you know, that, and so, you know, to me, that's, that's where we need to drill down and see, you know, or administration needs to drill down and let us know, you know, what it, what, what has caused that, what is causing that? And then therefore, from a board perspective, what direction do we need to go with that information? So no, thank you. I did not expect you to, to fully answer that, but thank you for trying.
Okay.
Can I ask a real quick follow-up question? Will we have the opportunity to speak with Val again after we've received the, the document? It's very hard for me to look at it from the screen. So would that, that potentially be able to occur again in case we do have some more questions?
Yes, absolutely. She can join us again on the 11th.
Great. And I do want to thank you very much, Dr. Malasch and Val. It was very, it was very helpful to look at those graphs.
Great, thank you.
So I have one other quick follow-up question, and maybe it's more of a takeaway, since we're noting that there's a change from elementary to middle school. And as you pointed out earlier in the presentation, Val, you talk about a large portion of the economically disadvantaged students being African-American and Hispanic. So I'd like to see, does that enrollment for that population change at the middle school level? Like, how many of the African-American and Hispanic population are attending Rosa versus how many are attending Carusi and then West versus their Caucasian counterparts who may not fall, who may or may not fall into the economically disadvantaged group, right? That are enrolling at Rosa and East versus West? And perhaps understanding how that pertains to the homeschool that they would be enrolled at? I would be curious to see that information, because to me, what this really points to at the end of the day is about equity. And maybe the goal is more around equity than just the achievement gap, right? What equity do we bring to, I guess, bring down that gap or something of that nature? Just that's the overarching theme that keeps coming out from these numbers. But that would be really helpful information for me to understand those trends. I think breaks it down a bit further.
So I, the document that will be shared with you, that I did come up, I did come up with a document that did give the percentages of each of the schools and then the two elementary school groups by race and ethnicity. And there also the graph for the economically disadvantaged. So what additional are you asking for that I have not provided? And if you want to review your document, the document, and then like send it to Dr. Malasch or whoever you're supposed to send it to, they will send it to me. And I would be happy to, to work on it, but I'm not sure right now what's your-
And this, you may not have had this piece out, because that's okay. But for me, I think what's missing is since Rosa is a lottery and East is, you know, a choice, right? What I don't see in there is how many of each of this population, right? Where they would be enrolled versus where they're choosing to go, right? It's just an extra layer of information.
So Lori, are you looking for the, the kids that attend Rosa? You want to know whether they, if their homeschool is Beck or Carusi, and then by demographics? And the same thing for East and West?
Yeah, I think that might be very helpful.
We can see what, if we can do a correlative piece, we can talk to the folks in technology and work with Genesis and see.
Oh, I've got that.
You have that, all right.
Yeah. I've got that, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep. Thank you for clarifying it.
No problem.
All right, any more questions for Val? Val, again, Ms. Sadwin, we're incredibly appreciative. So Ms. Sadwin won't tell you, but she spent most of the last four days going back and forth, working on this to put it together. So very appreciative always for what Val does and how she is able to present the information and make it understandable. She is the hardest critic on herself and will change it each time she sends it to make sure that it is, it is clear. Again, with the goal, she wants people to understand, you know, the information that's on there. So very appreciative to Val for joining us this evening, and we'll look to see that we can have her join us again on the 11th when we are together for this discussion. So thank you, Val, for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Sadwin.
All right, because in the interest of time, we are going to have a discussion about the accessibility reports. Just want to see if there are any other, and I appreciate the board members making comments in the very beginning about direction and ideas with goals. See if there's anything else, goal-wise or topics that you have been considering, that you want us administratively to be looking at directionally, or if you're, you're good with us preparing additional materials for you to look at for, before next Tuesday.
I'll go around the room one last time. That way-
Thanks, Lisa.
Lori? Mrs. Neary, sorry.
No, it's fine. Not off the top of my head at the moment, I'm still taking notes from the presentation, so forgive me.
Okay.
Okay, Mrs. Matlock.
Okay, for the goals, one of the things I did have down was diversity, staff diversity. And I'm sorry, I can't recall if we, if that was mentioned or listed before, but if not, that's another one that I, that I'd like to see us take a look at.
Okay.
Yep, Mrs. Matlock, there were a few other board members that had similar, similar questions about that as well. I know that that had been a board goal or an action step in the past.
Yes.
So there, there definitely are several other board members that are interested in pursuing that topic as well.
When I send out Ms. Sadwin's information, Ms. Adrian and some of the folks in her office put together a comparative chart of the last few years too about staff diversity. So I would love to send you an initial draft of that as well.
Excellent. Not necessarily that we, you know, depending on what we decide on the goals, it has been an action step. It's just something that I think that we should keep in the forefront.
Yep, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Matlock. Mr. Goodwin.
The one thing that I would like to, I'm not sure how this all fits in, but one thing I would, I wanted to see, and I believe part of it is already happening, but just really a push to have more African-American and Hispanic students take higher-level classes in terms of math and science and English, and somehow to not only, obviously not, for them not only to take them, but to be successful and somehow helping them, having the teachers encourage them and support them in taking higher-level classes, beginning obviously in fifth grade and then going through middle school and high school.
Thank you.
Mrs. Tong.
I don't have any questions, Lisa, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fardell.
I just concur with Mrs. Matlock and the, looking at the diversity of staff. And also, I do think equity needs to be part of what we're looking at, whether it's related to the opportunity gap, or it's related to, as Mr. Goodwin just pointed out, you know, more students of color taking higher-level classes. So I don't know if equity is its own lens or it's incorporated.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fardell. Mr. Avadia.
Yes, I actually can concur on that. I was, I was going to say it anyway, but Ms. Fardell stole my thunder. Equity, I think, has a lot of lenses, a lot of which we're studying. But I'd like to see kind of what different graph goals could look like on that metric, be it family engagement, be it one-to-one technology, be it title fund, however that looks. What is, what's kind of the options? Looking back at some previous goals, SATs came up a lot in terms of a leveling of our district as sort of a, one of those achievement pieces on the overall versus the disparities. I'd want to like kind of means test, like, does that make sense? SATs, as I recall, was in several years. I don't hear us talking about that, I'm not sure that's a good measure, but I just put that out there as a question mark. And then kind of the three strategic vision piece goals, right? SEL, outside classroom experiences, engagement, and then passion interest-based learning. Like, how could we look at maybe a couple of possibilities, maybe one to really dive into this year? Or kind of what's on the menu with that? And so those are, those are kind of my thoughts of additional things to think about.
Great, thank you, Mr. Avadia. And Mrs. Royal.
Hi, thank you. I do like, well, I would like to take a little bit more time to review. I do like, well, I would like to take a little bit more time to review by the increase of the smaller amongst Black and Hispanic students. And earlier she stated that it's based on schools. So maybe just kind of getting a better understanding on the things that did work well and how to enhance that and how the district is going to look at that in terms of the goals. But also, so that's one. And then the second one, I want to kind of expand the conversation around diversifying staff. I think it's, one is very important, obviously, to increase the diversity in our staff. But also, what are we doing as a district to enhance, you know, leadership, specific leadership opportunities for staff that may help them gain a little bit more support in the community so that they can support our students? So what are specific to Black, Hispanic, and/or other teachers or administration to focus on their specific needs as people of color or staff that are coming in? So that we can keep interest and keep motivating others to come to our district? So beyond just the staff, what are we going to help develop them as leaders? And I think...
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Royal. The only other thing that I would like to throw out there, and if other board members are in agreement, we could certainly add that to our discussion for the next meeting. One of the items that were in our goals, an action step in our goals last year, and also, you know, we've just hinted at in our strategic planning work, is sort of looking at Rosa, looking at our schools and how, you know, they're aligned with our neighborhoods. And I really, you know, I think a lot of our conversations about that didn't necessarily move forward because of COVID. And we didn't necessarily have an opportunity to continue those conversations. For me, I think that is important in terms of some of our goal work for this year, to continue that discussion. I don't know if anybody else is in agreement or not, but just something that I had notes on. I agree.
I agree.
Okay. And Ms. Sadwin, I think Mrs. Schultz is with us as well.
Great, I know. I did see, I did just write myself a note to remember to ask her, because I saw she jumped in late. Welcome, Mrs. Schultz. Any feedback or comments you wanted to share with the team?
Yeah, I appreciate, thank you, Lisa, for asking. I did jump in late, so I would like to take this time just to review the presentation. But I will just comment on your last comment. I would agree with you in regards to taking a look at just the way the schools are aligned with the neighborhood comments. But I'm sure I'll have some more feedback at our next meeting. But thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. I really appreciate the feedback and the information. We'll look to have information in the memo on Thursday for a board review to inform our discussion for Tuesday, August the 11th. I will send updated information. I'll send out Ms. Sadwin's report this evening to the board, so you have that as well. Now, Mrs. Sugars, I have another presentation I'm going to put on, right? I think Mr. Profara is with us. Lou, you're on with us?
Yes, sir.
There you are. How you doing, Lou?
Very good. Bob should be, Bob should have called in.
We should also have Rakesh and Neil from ERI with us.
We're here.
Okay, very good.
Excellent.
Let Dr. Malash bring up the presentation. I'm going to apologize for the rudimentary-ness of the presentation. It's been, I was working on it as late as a half an hour ago. So I didn't get to juju's up as much as I usually like to. But the poor thing is that we get questions answered and give some backgrounds on how we got to this point. And I'm hoping you can all hear me, trying to talk a little louder than normal. Until Joe brings it up.
Yes, you're clear.
Mark, are we good?
I don't have the share yet. There it goes.
Mark, are you able to switch those over?
It should be coming up momentarily.
Good man, thank you, sir. That's our assistant director of technology, Mark Lewinsky, who's one of the producers. He and Joe DeCarlo off-site. So they are the ones that are keeping us going. So Mark and Joe, as always, we're very appreciative. They keep me balanced, well done. All right, Mrs. Sugars.
All right, so I'm going to go back to last May when our ADA conversation started in earnest. And at that point was when we had decided to hire a firm to take a look at some of our accessibility issues. We had a BNF meeting in May 7th of 2019. And out of that meeting, we came up with some goals for the 1920 school year. Part of that was to install accessibility at four of our schools. Cooper, Hart, Stockton, and Beck did not have stage accessibility. We chose those four schools because some of the other schools were on the list for the bond referendum to get new all-purpose rooms, so we held off on those schools at the time. In the West Auditorium, we had an issue where, over time, the soundboard and the lighting equipment had kind of migrated into the handicapped seating area for the auditorium. We were going to relocate that and restore the handicapped seating in that area and install proper signage in that area. And eventually, even in addition to that, we ended up replacing the main entry doors. As part of that project wasn't originally something we thought we were going to do. With playgrounds, we were going to ensure that there's an accessible route from the school building to the playground, and we were able to do that. And then we engaged with ERI to talk about some of the bigger issues, which was handicapped signage throughout the district. We have a lot of signs, a lot of different kinds of signs. We wanted to make sure that our signage was appropriate. We wanted to make sure that it was pointing in the right direction and indicating the right thing. So we wanted to have an evaluation of what that looked like. And then our parking areas, accessible parking spaces, adequate size signage and markings, crosswalks and curb cutouts, focusing again on the main entrance to the building to make sure that people had access to the main entrances of the building where the handicapped access to the building, which is not necessarily always the main entrance. Next slide, please. We also, in the past school year, did some other projects. We always are including ADA and accessibility in our projects when we plan them. We did some door replacements. We've replaced just about every exterior door in the district at this point. We did some fencing replacements, and we did some vestibule projects this year. We'll talk about the vestibules a little bit later. But this picture here is an example of some of the work that we did over at Cooper. That was part of the fencing project because we needed to make sure that we could evacuate. That area of the Cooper is used in the emergency evacuation process, so we included that area there for handicapped accessibility if anyone had to evacuate Cooper. So we go to the next slide. You can see that these are the stages that we did that I just mentioned. The work that we had done there over last summer, Hart, Cooper, Stockton, and Beck. And we used either ramps or lifts that we installed in each of those areas. So that was the goal for the 1920 school year, to make sure that we were including some of these projects and make sure that we did them, again, in a way that was practical. For instance, that we did the stages that we knew, you know, the schools weren't going to get an additional APR potentially. So we started there. And that was the goal for the 1920 school year, to address those various projects. We move on to the next, ERI accessibility reports. One thing that I think we missed pointing out last week is that all of the district's school buildings are accessible. No building was cited as inaccessible in the ERI studies. Critical, we're going to talk about the difference between critical and necessary a little bit. Critical does not mean that access to the building is being hindered. The purpose of these studies was to assess and prioritize accessibility work that needs to be done in a thoughtful, comprehensive manner, using financial resources effectively through small projects, larger projects, and bond referendum projects. The scope of the work that's presented in the plans only addresses accessibility issues. Other site work deficiencies are not included. So for example, if we go to the next slide, I'm hoping that you can see this. I know the print is somewhat small. This is the concept plan for Malberg, which is the building that we're in right now. And you can see that in terms of the paving, in the front of the building, paving would be limited to the gray shaded area. They want us to re-stripe that area, so we literally would be re-striping the parking lot on top of asphalt that really, I don't think we'd want to be re-striping upon. And then we would be addressing the accessibility on the side of the building, which is where the entrance to the alternative high school is. There are lots of other deficiencies at Malberg that would not be addressed if we were to only address the ADA issues and not take a look at the entire site in a comprehensive manner. For instance, if we go to the next slide, these are some of the current conditions in the Malberg parking lot that would not be addressed if we simply focused on the ADA piece and didn't, again, look at the whole site in a comprehensive manner and try to address the ADA issues in conjunction with some of the other issues. So literally, you would be striping on top of pavement that is not acceptable to be striped upon. So that was sort of our point that night about wanting to make sure that as we approach these projects, that we do it in a comprehensive manner, that we take into account the ADA pieces, but that we also look at the site work as a whole and make sure that we are addressing site deficiencies, that we're taking into consideration if this is a, there's a larger project in the future. For instance, a roofing project that we're not going to be putting down pavement that then could be potentially ruined, that we're not doing a project that you're not spending money on certain items that are then, you know, a couple of years down the road would be ripped out and redone in a different way. So that's why, you know, we want to use these ERI accessibility reports as a baseline plan to develop what makes sense, what should we be doing first, and what should we be addressing as we move forward. I did receive some questions over the weekend that I wanted to make sure that we addressed. The first one we're going to address is about Beck. Go to the next slide, please. This, again, is the concept plan that was in the accessibility report for Beck. And again, you can see that this plan does not address all of the issues that would need to be addressed at Beck and all the issues that would be addressed through the vestibule project. We would do not only the security vestibule and the interior work, but we would also be doing some of the exterior work as well. The first question is about the proposal by ERI for the work at Beck. What percentage of that value is for parking lot? The parking lot, the district does not intend to repair at this time. The only piece that we would not intend to repair right at this time would be the West parking lot, which is the one area on, not at the main entrance side, but the other side, the side of the school near the tennis courts. There's some, actually, some spots that needed to be removed from that. That's the only piece that wouldn't be addressed under the current bid for the vestibule. And I'm going to let Rakesh and Neil jump in here and talk a little bit more about the costs that are in the proposal versus the actual costs that we have received to do these projects and why there's some difference between the estimates and what the work that we're actually doing and how it benefits us to, again, do these projects as part of a bigger project.
Okay. Thanks, Lynn. First, I guess, to answer the question regarding the cost of the improvements, just the ADA portion of the improvements for the West parking lot, we did take a look at that after, you know, this afternoon. The total cost estimate that we had for just the accessibility improvements based off of our concept plan was $121,600. And that was for all the improvements shown on the plan that's on your screen. The, we went and looked at what the improvements on that Western parking lot, which are not proposed to be done as part of this project, they, we estimated would be about $24,000. So roughly, you know, $97,000 or so is what we're proposing to get done. Now, one of the things we talked about was the economy of scale or an economy of scope, I guess you could say, when you include the accessibility improvements with larger projects. So one of the things that we did was look at Beck for that. So our estimate was, and also, one of the other things that we talked about was, when you get into the actual project and you start doing an actual, you know, drill-down sort of analysis of the actual project, you start actually doing some additional, or finding additional things that may need to get done. That sort of has to happen as part of the improvement. So what we found when we got into it was we needed to do some additional storm pipe removal and replacement. And again, this is just for the base stuff, which is on your screen right now. We found that there's a storm pipe that's in the parking lot, in that shaded parking area that's shown in the front parking lot where the vestibule is going to be. A storm pipe there that needs to be replaced, an additional six-inch roof collector pipe that needs to be replaced, some curving in that area, and some additional concrete flatwork, which comes out to about roughly $13,000 worth of additional work. So when you add that in to the $97,000 or so of the work that was already programmed in, we're looking at about $110,000 is what our estimate would be for the scope of our Beck project, or at least for the ADA accessibility improvements for the Beck. Mr. Garrison's office actually got in contact with the contractor, who was the low bid on the project, to get a cost for what they attributed of the total bid, of their total bid, what was attributed to the accessibility improvement. And their cost was $60,125 for the improvement. So essentially, the stuff that we had estimated that would be about $110,000, and it probably would be around that if we had a standalone project. We're getting a little bit, quite a bit of economy of scale and scope because they're doing more work there and it's a larger project as a whole. So we're getting that $110,000 worth of work done roughly for about $60,000. So that's sort of the analysis that we wanted to present and discuss. I know there was some discussion at the last meeting about trying to break down the red items, the critical versus the necessary improvements and all that. What we found when we started looking into each one of those, that's really, it's quite, it's a bit of an undertaking to do that only because a lot of those items are actually linked together. So there's, what we found was a lot of the red items really can't get done in a vacuum. You know, there are some other items that would still need to get done as part of that. So the cost wouldn't be a straight, you know, percentage or extrapolation from, or sort of separation of those items. You really need to go in and do an analysis that says, well, what, you know, what work has to get done in order to address these additional deficiencies? So that's a bit of an undertaking. So we weren't able to, in the time that we had between the last meeting and this meeting, we weren't able to actually break down the red item costs versus yellow item costs because they're sort of, you know, they're sort of linked. I wouldn't say inextricably linked, but they're kind of mixed together. So the cost would be a little bit more complicated to separate out.
Mr. Garrison or Mr. Profara, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, just to reiterate what ERI is saying, what we're doing with, as Garrison, as your architect of record, is using the information ERI has provided us and incorporating it into our project. into our project. So, I mean, we had questions in the previous meeting about why previous vestibules didn't have site work done. This report was not done at the time. We, moving forward, we will incorporate everything on the recommendations into our projects and additionally into the referendum.
So basically, as we have been developing these plans, again, the ERI accessibility plans are a roadmap for the things that we need to do. We have to be careful that we are incorporating these pieces into larger projects to make sure all of the site work issues are being addressed. And that, you know, really is our plan moving forward. As we do these smaller projects and as we plan larger projects, we will move ahead and try to incorporate these site work issues into each of these plans. We have a certain amount of money set aside in the budget. We'll talk about that in a moment. And, you know, we already had some discussions about where to focus those funds. Again, there isn't a building that is not accessible, so it's not an issue of people not being able to get into the building, but there certainly are areas that we can make improvements, and I'll highlight one of those in just a moment. Move on to the next slide. So this is the cost estimate that ERI was just referring to that was in their accessibility report for BEC. And we're going to move on to the next slide. As Lou just mentioned, I think there was a question that had come through about the vestibules that we had already completed. There seemed to be the impression that we were not taking into ADA into account as we did those vestibules. That's not the case. We absolutely did take it into account in the construction of the vestibules. What we didn't do with these vestibules necessarily was expand the scope of site work to accommodate the new entrances, and that's what we're trying to do as we move forward. So I went out today and snapped a couple pictures just to show you. This is the Barclay vestibule. The front entrance there is accessible. The little window that we have in the lobby there is a picture is at the appropriate ADA height for that vestibule. The turning radius inside the vestibule is appropriate. Door width is appropriate. Next slide. We look at wood pressed in addition, same things. We, you know, we have the accessible entrance there. Building is accessible. The turning radius is appropriate. Next slide. Pain, you know, there is a ramp up to the vestibule entrance. The doorway into the office is the appropriate size. And then, if we take a look at the next one. This is west. This is a vestibule where previously there was not a handicapped entrance. The main entrance was not the handicapped entrance. It was actually, the handicapped entrance was at a different location. And we incorporated the ramp into this project. We made sure it's a very large vestibule, so there's no issues with turning radiuses or anything like that. The door sizes are appropriate. That last picture on the right, I know there was a comment in the reports about concrete. This is the concrete that we're speaking of. This is the area that was not poured correctly. It's been poured twice. The slope is off slightly. It's, to the naked eye, you wouldn't be able to detect it, but it's not meeting the standard that was in the spec, and so it's going to be poured, yet ripped out and poured yet again to make sure that it's at the right slope that it's supposed to be at. So, you know, we did incorporate these items. We are monitoring them. Again, as I told you, we did not accept that portion of the project at this point, and again, it'll be re-poured. Now, this to me is, this is an example of one of the things that we're talking about. You can see down to the right, past the white car, that is the accessible entrance, which you can see where the accessible handicap spots are located. They're nowhere near the front entrance. So this is one of the things that's on the top of our list to be looked at as we plan how to use the money that we've set aside for accommodations in this year's budget. This is one of the things that's at the top of the list. This is an example of how, if we had expanded the site work, we could have addressed these issues as we were installing the vestibule while we had the contractors here. And again, that will be our model moving forward. So this is an example of where we could have expanded the scope and addressed this issue. Did not do that. We are going to do that now by using the funds that we have set aside for the ADA accommodations. We move on to the next slide. Again, this is our other vestibule that we did. We replaced all of the front doors across the front. The vestibule, you know, is an appropriate size. And one last picture there from the next slide. Yeah, again, the window, we actually lowered the window in this project so that it was appropriate. There is a ramp up to the entrance, so accessibility at that entrance is there and appropriate. So just wanted to make sure that people understood that, you know, we did not, it's not that we didn't do ADA accommodations in the project. We did do them. We didn't necessarily expand it to the site work as we could have, and that's the model that we will use moving forward. We go to the next slide. So there was a question about capital reserve funds and where we are with those projects in terms of dollars. And I just wanted to go over this quickly so that we understand. When we approved our budget in March, we set aside funds for the BEC vestibule. We set aside funds for ADA compliance, and we set aside funds to finish up the district-wide camera and swipe card access projects. We're receiving, as you know, Alyssa's Law funds to offset some of the cost of those projects, so that was a project we wanted to make sure that we moved ahead with. In June, we passed a resolution to increase the money for the BEC vestibule as we took a look at the site work that was going to be done and some of the additional things that we were going to do. We realized our estimate, which we were using, was not adequate, and we needed to increase those funds. And in the spirit of protecting our capital reserve funds moving forward, we added some additional projects. One of them was the Stockton Roofing Project. And then we set aside funds for bond referendum development for architects and engineers to come in and start cataloging our buildings and preparing for bond referendum development. And then finally, we approved funding for two more projects, the Barton Security Vestibule and the Mann Security Vestibule. The board had requested that we set aside some additional funds, and we did that with those two projects. So you can see there in the last column where we are in terms of those projects. ADA compliance, we are planning right now. The camera and swipe card projects are in progress. They've been to a couple buildings. The BEC Security Vestibule, we have the bids. The bid is slated to be approved at August, the August 11th board meeting. Stockton Roofing Project, we've just started to take a look at as we're looking at substantial money to spend on repairs at that building. We are looking at, you know, potentially not spending the money on repairs and moving ahead with that project. The $5 million that we set aside for bond development, we have not used yet. We haven't made plans to use that at this point. And for the two vestibules, we had talked about those projects going through BNF committee so that we could have, you know, some more discussion and input on those projects. We have not made any plans to move those projects forward at this point. So that's a breakdown of our capital reserve account and where the funds are. And gentlemen, I'll open it up to you to add any other points that you'd like to add that we didn't cover this evening. Want to start with Rakesh and Neil?
I think you did a really comprehensive job of covering all the stuff. I just wanted to reiterate, I do agree with Lynn on the, and I was a little remiss in not clarifying that at our last meeting, that we don't have any buildings that are inaccessible. The study basically looked at the condition and compliance with current standards, and that's really what the study is speaking to, is where we stand as far as the condition of our accessibility route and compliance with current standards. And that's what the chart sort of emphasizes, the critical items which we need to address versus necessary versus the green items which are enhancements. But that's all I really have right now. I think we covered pretty much everything that I had wanted to cover, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that we get.
I wanted to add one more point. There was some question about ADA issues on the interiors of the building when it comes to bathrooms and door frames and hardware and things of those nature. You know, that is really being evaluated as we speak, as our architect moves through the buildings and is evaluating each building. They're taking notes of those items and cataloging those items, so we can take a look at those and decide how to move ahead. Again, you know, similar to the asphalt, we have doors that are original to the buildings that are 50, 60 years old. You know, we need to look at that before we put new hardware on one of those doors. Does it make more sense to replace the entire door? And how do we, when you're looking at significant money to do that, how does that work and what does that look like? So I don't know if Bob or Lou want to comment on that about how we're moving forward and making sure that, you know, we're addressing those items and cataloging those items and developing a plan for them.
Yeah, Lynn.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, sorry. Sorry, everybody. I'm technology challenged, as they say. A door is a perfect example, Lynn, that you bring up. And when we go through, we evaluate a simple thing like a classroom door. Well, it's got a lot of different components. Is the door fire rated? Does the frame have to be fire rated? Does it have a closer? How wide is it? Is it ADA compliant? Are we going to have that area renovated inside of there? Do we need more inches of egress? So a simple thing like a door can have six or eight criteria when we walk through the building that we have to look at before we either recommend that it's replaced or recommend a modification in concert with the whole big picture. And I was pleased to call the low bidder at BEC so that we could present to the board the differential that Rakesh talked about, and that is the economy of scale. And if you have an aspect of a project that was $110,000 and you can buy it for 60 because you're smart in the way that you package it with the particular bid. The one thing that we'll always do for the Board of Education is give you options. So just like you saw in this particular bid, we will always have our eyes wide open. And the eyes wide open is, do the security vestibule, but hey, what about the east parking lot? Hey, what about, you know, a full depth replacement? Hey, what about this? To give the board not only the agreed-upon scope of work, but what can you buy on bid day, and you may find some value in that as you move forward, but it enables you to make a more informed decision with options presented to you and actual costs, not guests.
Was that all, was that it, Mrs. Suggers? Okay.
I think so. Can certainly answer some questions if there's some questions.
Okay. So I think I'd like to sort of kick off the comments and the questions. So a couple things that I want to just, you know, point out right off the bat. This discussion, as, you know, we all experienced at our last meeting, the topic of ADA compliance is a very emotional discussion. As board members, though, we, at times, we have to put that emotional discussion aside and look through the lens of all 11,000 students and also look through the lens of fiscal responsibility. Yes, ADA is federal law. Yes, there's no doubt we all want all of our children to be included and be able to safely get in the building. So I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't have all of our children's safety and security top of mind. But I do, I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that over the past year and a half, we've heard a lot from the community about how they want a long-term strategic plan. They want us to approach things from the big picture and plan it out over time. And to me, hearing that from the community and having lived through that over the past year and a half, we, the things I'm seeing from Garrison, for example, in the BEC project is what the community has been asking us to do. Take a look at a project and address a lot of our issues at one time in, where we can be fiscally responsible and plan and do more than one thing at a time. We all know that for many, many years, because we've been so cash strapped, we've just, you know, put Band-Aids, Band-Aids on things. And, you know, we brought Garrison in to help us with this goal of creating a longer-term plan so that we can get more of the items that we are in desperate need to do, done. And for me, you know, handling these projects in that fashion, you know, and again, I'm just using the BEC project as an example because it is, we're accomplishing many of our board goals in that project. So for example, whether or not there are a few people that agree or disagree with it on the board, the board agreed to move forward with security suites. We said we value that for our school. We value the ADA compliance. That package handles both of those. You know, for me, looking at that picture of Malberg, for example, to me, that parking lot looks dangerous to a lot of people. I mean, to say we have to do one curb cut because that's a red item on that report in isolation and not look at the big picture does not seem fiscally responsible to me. You know, I think we need to look at the big picture, and in that big picture, we have all, you know, I'm not going to speak for anybody else on the board, but I know I want to make a commitment to address all of those items in red and yellow, but I don't believe that just, you know, okay, let's go out and do all of those things at one time because they look, you know, because they're, because they're out there and they look terrible on that piece of paper and it's an emotional discussion. To me, that is not fiscally responsible, and that would not be, I would not be doing my job as a board member to just say, let's do that all at once. When we have an opportunity to address them along with other items that we need to address in our district in a very well-thought-out and methodical plan. So that's just sort of my two cents. I don't have any questions just yet. I'll reserve my questions after my colleagues speak, but that's my perspective on this topic. And next I'll go to, I'll start with Mrs. Tong this time. Mrs. Tong?
Yes. Hold on, let me open the notes. Give me a second. I believe last week, oh, yes, last week I asked some question. I'm not sure. Are we only thinking of session right now?
We are not. We're in public session.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure if I cannot ask certain questions, just let me know. I do have questions that I would like to add.
Mrs. Tong, are you going to ask your question?
Yeah. I'm just going to get to my notes. I have it in my, I think I'm, I don't know where I put them, but I got them here shortly. Okay, here we are. All right. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk right now, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask certain questions. As you all know, that our buildings, we have talked about, is over 50-plus or minus years old, and there's a lot of things to be replaced or repaired. I just want to know, to compare the cost effective between the repair and the replacement. And I also like, I know that there's a lot of ADA in, you know, things that we have covered, but there's a lot of ADA that I would like to know, inside and outside of the building, as well as the playground that needs to repair on each of the buildings, each building, break down in more itemized detail so that we can see better, which is better for in long term, over the years. And then, let me see. Okay. The other one, the last thing I think I'd like to know is, if that's with the ERI or the Garrison, is there any specific contract or warranty that's included with their work? I think that's all I have right now.
Okay. Dr. Malas and Mrs. Sugars, if you want to just collect questions and then we can just let you adjust them and answer at the end, will that, will that work?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. So next I'm going to go to Mr. Goodwin.
The one question I had, I think Mrs. Sugars answered. I just had the question around, I was concerned that some of the new vestibules that were just, we had just done were not ADA compliant, but I believe Mrs. Sugars did address that. Just to make, I just wanted to be clear, you know, that, that we didn't just spend money and not make sure those things were taken care of. But like I said, I think she did address it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Abadia.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just want to agree with a couple of comments. First of all, I think what Mr. Goodwin's saying is very important to understand that the piece that he talked about, as well as that, you know, that all buildings are accessible. So I think, at least for me, that non-compliant tag on the ERI report, especially seeing it that frequently started to be. But anyway, sort of into my, into my question. So I understand what we're saying. I understand the, and I thought I understood it the last time as well, that in terms of we've got to look at project-based versus just compliance-based, the former, you know, being much more expensive. But I guess my first question is, right, so this is outside of my, you know, realm of expertise. And so my question on the purely legal side is, you know, is this standard that we're discussing today, is that a good legal standard? In the sense that, as I noted last time, you know, one of the concerns is the bond is somewhat amorphous in terms of timeline and scope. There's also the possibility it doesn't get done. That pegging is something I would kind of want to see examined. When we look at red, yellow, and green, you know, getting those breakdowns was somewhat important, not because we were going to say, all right, if red is 3 million, let's just go ahead and commit 3 million. It's more for me, a comfort level on size and scope. In other words, if red is 1 versus 3, once we put it on that project level, for me, it looks different in terms of the overall pot of money. So trying to, trying to get a, sort of get a sense there, you know, how do these things break down? And is the standard that ERI proposes in their report, now ERI is very clear, not legal advice, but the standard of these colors is very, very clearly that red is a pre-bond type of discussion, yellow is more of a bond discussion, I mean, let alone green, because, you know, green isn't nice to have, which is great, and I want to get there, but money is in short supply. I think examining that standard with a legal framework now is also a good idea. I think in fairness, and I've tried to make note on a couple of meetings about Garrison and the great work they have ahead of them and the important work, but I think figuring out like, what's our timeline, right? For, for me, there's only a couple of times of the year you really get in the ground, maybe I'm wrong. But if we're talking about like a summer 2021 where we can do a lot of work, to me, we have a little bit of time for Garrison. So I don't know, I agree to Ms. Seidel's, Ms. Seidel's comments about the community wants to see big, we need that big vision, we need to figure out how it breaks down and do parts and pieces, absolutely. But Garrison, as we know, is uniquely qualified to put that together. Is it three-month or nine-month process? You know, how does that look? In terms of bond timing development, is there an advantage to, yes, doing ADA pieces in that in terms of that 40%? Are there disadvantages? Is, you know, is there a state funding component? I mean, when we looked at Beck itself, you know, as we looked at expanding that scope of that work, we were talking about a multiple of the dollars we're talking about now. And that was one of my questions about, like, look, if we know we're going to do a bunch of ADA work, is there an economy of scale that says, look, we're going to do three buildings? And since we'll use a similar contractor, there could be savings there? Is that something we should be examining? So these are some of my sort of opening questions based on the discussion today.
Thank you, Mr. Abadia. Mrs. Arroyo.
I just want to, I appreciate the report that we reviewed last week and the information that was provided today. My concern isn't that, you know, because I, I heard Lisa, your comments earlier, and I'm more, I'm looking at it more from the lens of equity and access and include, and inclusion. I don't, I don't disagree that some of the work has to be all together because it's part of a bigger, a bigger picture. I understand that one project can impact several others. I just want to make sure that we are putting a priority, constant priority on this, on this work. I do appreciate the breakdown, though, because I think that was a lot of the confusion last week when, when he broke earlier today. So I'm just going to go, I now have to go back and take a look at it again now that I understand that a little bit more. And are these, for each of the projects that are outlined, do we have, are those, do you have to go out the bid again each time? And, and still the expectation is to put all this work in a, towards the bond, but, you know, unknowing where that, where that whole process lies or what the result of that is going to be, that, I guess that part concerns me because I want to make sure that this work is getting done and that those priority areas are outlined even without having a bond in case that isn't like something that can happen considering where we're at right now. So I think that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Arroyo. Mr. Schultz.
Hi, Lisa. I don't really have any open questions, more I guess, just some, I guess, just some comments. You know, again, I appreciate the additional information and, you know, for me, I think we went through a pretty long year of doing RSPs for our professionals. So, you know, we have a new architect on record in Garrison. And again, we have Garrison and the professionals from ERI giving us their recommendations, explaining to us about how the economies of scope work. This is the first project that they've brought to us where they've now shown us $50,000 in savings on this vestibule. We just had Mr. Garrison explain to us about a basic door. You know, something as simple as a door has to be fire rated. How, you have to look at the ADA compliance, how there's more inches of regress. There's at least six to eight areas of concern in just a simple door. And I sit here and find myself thinking, this is all way out of my scope of what I would know. So I find myself looking to Garrison and the professionals at ERI and have to think, at some point, I have to put my trust in both of them, and that's exactly why we hire folks like Garrison and ERI. And then I also have to think, at some point, we're going to just discuss this topic to death. I also agree with you, Lisa, that ADA is an extremely emotional conversation. But when I sit back and I look at these projects and the decisions that we have to make, and then I hear things that, you know, it's, our buildings do have access. And then I go back to conversations where we've had in the BNS meeting where we were hoping to get this report so that we could have a plan, have a roadmap. Those are things that we've talked about in BNS, that we were going to use this report to work with Garrison and develop our roadmap to make sure we were addressing the ADA issues moving forward. We were going to develop parallel tasks just so we could address it if the bond passed or if the bond fails, so that we were taking care of the most critical areas of ADA. You know, I guess for me, I just, I just think that at some point, again, I'll say it again, at some point, we have to start trusting the advice that we're getting, the professionals. And for me, when I think about my professional life, when we pull in professionals and they make a recommendation, you know, we tend to go with that recommendation. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Schultz. Ms. Frydell.
Hi. Yes, I have some, some questions. When we had the call last week, I have notes from the meeting and I actually did review some of them. And critical was defined as being non-compliant and potentially immediate safety items. And some of the examples were excessive slopes, accessible roofs, uneven pavements, et cetera. Necessary were non-compliant with ADA and should be incorporated into projects. And I believe there was even discussion over, they could be incorporated a few projects a year and over time. And then enhancements were the not compliant ADA issues, but could be incorporated into the projects. So I still go back to the issue that we had a lot of red items, which were critical, which are potential immediate safety items. Today, we heard that in some cases, you can't address the red without addressing the yellow. But that does not take away from the fact where I believe Mr. Abadi was going with some legal guidance, because we have now been identified with immediate safety items and at each and every one of the schools. I also have a question, and that's really a basic question of why didn't the district expand the scope in the prior vestibule work? Why, why did we not include site work? And what is the plan to go back to the schools that have the vestibules already built and address the site work? Payne and Woodcrest are on the list of the top schools. In fact, Woodcrest was, I believe, the number one priority school for the work to be done, and Payne is three. So when are we going back to Woodcrest and Payne and addressing all these red issues since we've already done the vestibule work? My next question is, when did the district, did we actually receive the ERI report? Because one of the things that Mr. Garrison said was that they incorporated the ERI documents into the bidding process, and I'm paraphrasing. However, we just saw the report last week. So I'm curious as to when the report actually entered the district. And, you know, had we seen it, would that have made any, any differences? I also want to know, we set aside almost $2 million for Barton and Mann to have work done, but they don't show up on the number top seven list of, of schools. So are we going to be looking at projects based on support and what has been identified? Or are we using some other method to identify work being done? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frydell. Ms. Matlock.
Oh, yes, thank you. I don't have any additional questions, you know, some of them have already been asked. I do, Mrs. Sugars, I did appreciate your comment about the, that none of our buildings are inaccessible, because having read through the ERI report for each of the buildings that tied in with a paragraph that was in the conclusion of each of the building's reports that said, and I'll just read part of it, it's, every board member has this. "We anticipate that recommend, all recommendations made throughout the report will be addressed as part of a future referendum. However, should a referendum not pass or is several years out, we recommend programming the critical recommendations at a few schools each year so funding can be appropriated." That was in the ERI report for each of the schools. And, you know, at first, when I, when I read that, I was wondering why the critical, that was the recommendation for the critical, but you tied it in when you said that none of our schools were rated or, or evaluated as inaccessible. So that recommendation became clearer to me. I believe tonight, hearing Bob and Lou also speak, that, that told, that also their recommendation seems, and their, the way that they seem to be moving forward, seems to also be aligned with that. Mrs. Schultz said it much more eloquently than I ever could, and I won't repeat it. But at some point, we hire professionals to give us their professional advice. And, you know, in this case, two professionals outside of our district are giving us concurring advice. It is an emotional topic. I know we all would like to have the money to do it all at once, get everything done. And the advice of our professionals recognizes that that's not what our reality is. We don't have the money to get it all done at once, along with all the other things that have to be done in the district. And their advice is to program the critical recommendations for a school, a few schools each year so funding can be appropriated. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Matlock. And Ms. Neary.
Thank you. So a couple of things. First, I think, one, Ben, Mr. Abadi has mentioned it a couple of times, but I think we need a definitive legal opinion here. Some of this stuff is law. They're not nice to have. And we need to understand what our obligation is under that law, because we're saying the buildings are accessible. We have reports that say there are areas of non-compliance. Well, does that mean, according to ADA, that it isn't accessible for the guidance in the law? Like, we need to understand that. We need to have an assessment done of the inside of the building so that we're actually talking about the full cost and scope of remediation of the work. Right now, we have partial insight so that we're operating with a full lens and a full understanding so that we don't have half the information. It's really hard to make those decisions, especially when it comes to money and being financially prudent in doing that. And while we know we want to do these as part of bigger projects, and we know we don't have the money, as others have said, we also know that this isn't new information per se, maybe in the details, yes, but we've had this OCR for almost 20 years, and we've kind of punted it. And now it's kind of the bucket stopping here. So we have to figure out how we're going to do that. And while we know we want to do a bond, I think it's incredibly prudent and, as others so eloquently stated numerous times, fiscally responsible to work this in parallel, not just, we're going to do a project as part of the bond. Well, I think we have to work in parallel and understand what our big picture planning is, not just in the bond or when we do the bond or the bond. What, what is it going to look like if we don't have a bond? So yes, we're planning a bond here, but how do we do that work and ensure compliance and safety for our students if there is no bond? Because we, we can't just continue to punt it to say, well, we didn't get a bond, so it's not going to be fully accessible for some. As Mrs. Arroyo pointed out, it is a matter of equity for some of our students and equal access, and we have to remedy that. And, you know, regarding the Beck vestibule, I still need to understand, and if there isn't time to do it tonight and somebody wants to send it offline, that's fine, but the, the 1.2 million, you know, what is making up all of that cost? We started out originally at 500,000, then we need an additional 1.2. ERI says it's about 90,000 plus for the ADA work for the vestibule at Beck in the front of the building. So how are we getting the 1.2? I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around those numbers. I am fortunate that this is my professional life. So to me, I would be completely remiss in my duty to not ask and make sure I understand before I'm making decisions that by using these monies, right, we're impacting all of the students. We have to understand that. I need to understand that to make an informed decision. So that's a big piece for me. And I, understanding the legal. And I, understanding the legal implication. I don't know how much longer we can continue to punt this and sit back at the end of the day. If red and yellow items are linked, then we need to do them. But I don't think we can punt them any longer. It's 20 years, emotional or not, we have a legal obligation, and I want to know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Neary. So one of the, Mrs. Sugars or Dr. Malash, one thing is, you know, we did put money aside, and you covered some of the items that we've already taken care of outside of the bond at the beginning of the presentation. And to Mrs. Neary's point, you know, we can't, we can't rely on only the bond to get things done. But if I'm remembering correctly, you know, we have, we have had that discussion about, you know, making sure that there is money to accomplish this outside of the bond. And so you had already allocated, I believe, $500,000 in this budget for ADA compliance before any of this discussion. So are you, how does, how does this new information change what you were thinking of in terms of doing with that money? I guess is a question for me. And then I'll just turn it back to both of you to answer and address the board members' comments and questions.
Hey, Lisa, I just want to jump in. I have one last question, but, and this is for Mrs. Sugars, just if we could add, but we've discussed in BNF throughout the last better half of six to eight months that we were going to have parallel paths. I know that I have reported it to the board in my readouts as chair of the committee, that the plan was to get the report from ERi and then to discuss parallel paths, both with a referendum and both if the bond failed. And so I just would like to know if I'm having some memory issues on that, if you could refresh my memories. But I do specifically remember talking about this with the rest of the BNF committee, that we have said multiple times, could we, could we please get legal clarification? I know that was a request of the committee. And could we please make sure that we had parallel paths if the bond failed and if it didn't fail, and that we had talked about the results of this ERi report and using this as the pathway to come up with that report? Because I feel like I might be the only one remembering how many times we've talked about that parallel path. So I just, if you could clarify that for me. Thank you.
Yes, please, because I haven't seen.
Go ahead, Mrs. Neary, you started first.
Mrs. Schultz is correct. We've discussed the parallel path, but I'm not hearing what the parallel path is. We've got the report, but we need to understand that before we keep layering in all these other projects without seeing the big picture, right? Like, let's start to understand what that is, bond and no bond.
Yeah, I agree, Lori. I think, though, we need to get the results of the ERi report, and that's what I'm looking, that's, I just want to make sure, like, that we had talked about that, we talked about getting the results of this ERi report so we could map out what that looks like, both with a bond and both without the bond. And I guess that's, that, I just want to kind of clarify that we're still going down that path. Because I just, now I'm, I'm kind of wanting to make sure I've got that right.
Okay. So thank you for the additional questions. Mrs. Sugars, back to you to try and answer some of these questions.
I had, I had a.
Oh, Rosie, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Royal.
Thank you, Lisa. I, every, you know, I think everybody's bringing great points to the table. My, my only thing is, I hear some of the frustration because the conversation has been ongoing, and some of them, you know, I, Ruth has reported out at the meeting. I don't see a problem with us having conversations that we are today and asking for additional information or getting more detailed information, like Ms. Schubert put together today and the team at Garrison put together. And that, that doesn't stop any of your, you know, future plans in the sense of, you know, looking at things as they move forward together and pulling that ERi report and making sure we're all on the same page. It's just clarity right now, and I, you know, I'm here, because I'm, again, I'm hearing frustration when we just want to understand, at least I just want to understand. But I found this entire conversation extremely helpful, so I do appreciate it.
Great, Mr. Royal, thank you. Okay. So with that, Mrs. Sugars or Dr. Malash?
All right, I'm going to answer these questions, and Rakesh and Neil and Lou and Bob, if you want to add anything as we go, and Paul also, because I think we're going to need all of your input. Buildings are 50 years old. Cost between repairs and replacement, you know, we're not in a position to give you those numbers at this point. I know that's something that we have talked about. You know, we're still evaluating the buildings. We just brought Garrison on in February, so we'll get there, but we're not at a point where we can talk about repairs and replace, versus replacement at this point. The inside and the outside of the buildings right now, we're working on that. Again, when we started this, we had, you know, ERis, it does the outside pieces, architects do the interior pieces, and they're working on that right now. Long term, for the years, ERi Garrison, any specific contract or warranty of their work? We have contracts with both. They are, Garrison is our architect of record. ERi, we contract with as we need to for engineering services. So we have contracts with both of them. Mr. Goodwin didn't have questions. Mr. Avadia? Understanding, is the standard that we are discussing a good legal standard? The bond is somewhat amorphous, it may not be done, that is true. Looking at red, yellow, and green, it is important to see what the scope of the work is to be done. It would look different in looking at the projects. Is it the standard of ERi's report, the standard of colors, red are pre-bond, yellow bond, green nice to have, through a legal lens? In fairness, Garrison and the work they have ahead of them, what sort of timeframe do they have? Summer 2021, how much time to prepare? Bond timing development? Is there an advantage to the 40% state funding component? Yes. Looking at Beck itself, the scope of work, is there an economy of scale to do multiple buildings? So I'll have to defer to Paul on the legal issue. I think that the colors, again, are all kind of interconnected, and it's probably going to be difficult to say that red is pre-bond, yellow is bond, and green is a nice to have, because they are all kind of interconnected together, which is why it was difficult for ERi not to break out the costs of the, each of those items. Again, I think we've been saying all along that our plan was to address anything that was egregious, that there was a building, for instance, that came back in the report that did not have accessibility. That would be our first, first project that we would do. You have to, you know, there was a question about when did we get these reports? Literally, we had these reports for two weeks now, I think. I mean, we received them, and within days, we shared them with the board. You know, we're still going through them at this point and trying to prioritize and decide what the next piece should be and what the best way is to do that. So again, I think I mentioned at the meeting on the 28th, I'm probably not going to have all the answers tonight about what the plan looks like going forward, but it's definitely on the top of our list and something that we are working on moving forward. I'll defer to Mr. Garrison and Mr. Prefer to answer about kind of what the timeline looks like in terms of being able to evaluate the rest of our buildings. I know you've done about six of them at this point. Do you have an idea of what the timeline looks like?
Yes, as soon as we can get some confidence that we can get back into the buildings in a safe manner, we'll be able to tackle the rest of the schools. But as I mentioned last in our meeting, the body of work is set. In other words, Mrs. Sugars has a document that's 90 pages long. So every single school has been started. And what I mean by that, there would be common elements in some schools, roof replacements, IT upgrades and whatnot. There's unit prices already assigned there, so we just, you know, drop into square footage, and you're able to start to generate the reports very quickly. So the difficult work, the template is already made. The exhibits, meaning floor plans and site plans, are already embedded into the presentation because that's the way we're going to work, in color, and so for ease of understanding. So a lot of the hard work is already been done. It's just a matter of getting into the buildings, you know, safely and finishing the balance of the schools. And if I can just continue on that theme, so finishing the evaluations of the building, making sure that the ERi recommendations are all part of this giant master plan. It is my job to point out, when I walk into a building, or Lou walks into a building or onto a site, everything that we think you need to correct is part of that facility. And while we get discouraged because it takes so long to get that body of knowledge, please understand that our approach is to put everything down. So you and the board are the decision makers as to what the priorities are in the district, because you know the district better than we do. You live there. You have to answer to your constituents, yet you have to know what's in the bond referendum. You have to be able to inform, you know, those that are participating in the voting process, and it's going to be your plan. But it's our job. It's our job to present everything that we think you need to consider. And that started with the Beck school. And the question was very pointed and very logical. If the ERi reports weren't available two weeks ago or three weeks ago, how did you, Garrison, know to put in handicap parking spaces, ramps, access, and deal with handicap bathrooms? How did you know to do that in the bid? And that's because that's the approach that Garrison takes. We're partners with the ERi, but we're not only going to rely on that, we walk in and we say, wait a minute. It's a vestibule, it's a main office, it's a staff bathroom for ADA compliance, it's the principal that needs to be tweaked, it's the, you know, transaction window that needs to be a little better, and it's the approach to the whole school. So we asked all those questions so that we could get it all into a bid package, and then, like I said, take the alternate so the board has authorship in exactly what's awarded. The other thing about a bond referendum, the way we are today in this uncertain world, we're going to have this great document of all the needs, and we're going to have great debate with you, the board members, and the community at large. So when is it safe that we're going to be able to do that? Is a big question in my mind, because these community meetings and the input is very important in order to narrow the scope. How are we going to have future elections? Are they all going to be Maryland elections like they are today? Is the Department of Education going to cancel elections? Because they canceled my September elections. They're not holding any special school elections. It's all going to be in November. The Department of Education, you well know, the Department of Education, last time was a roadblock in getting your project approved and ready to go. That situation has gotten worse. That department hasn't been to work since they left in March. They're working out of their houses. I go deliver drawings and parking lots of Wegmans to a couple of managers and get stuff, and it's completely dysfunctional right now. And that whole approval process is going to have a giant pent-up demand. So I'm monitoring that. We need to be aware of that before we start talking about a future referendum. And then, as we know, we want to have a great public relations campaign that we want to roll out, and whether that's a four to six-month process going forward. So not to be complicated, but when we talk about just that aspect of bonding, those are all the things that I monitor and that I'm thinking about before we roll it out.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate that dialogue.
Mrs. Freidell and Mrs. Sugars, this is Dr. Mahan. I apologize for interrupting, but I just wanted to remind everyone, I think that this is a wonderful conversation, and many of the questions are being answered that the board has tonight. But we work schedules for committee meetings this meeting, and we have individuals who are desk coming into our district to present at these meetings, and they have been waiting now for approximately 31 minutes to join the first meeting, which is supposed to start at 6 o'clock. I just hope that the board is mindful of the appearance of that to the community, as we are, you know, wanting to be respectful of time, but also wanting to be sure that all of your questions are answered on this most important topic.
Thank you, Dr. Mahan, for reminding us of that. So to that point, Mrs. Sugars, Dr. Malash, our next meeting will be a work session to read out from the committees. So we'll have more opportunity to continue this discussion at our next meeting, correct?
We will. That's correct.
Okay. So, so I think then, with the reminder that Dr. Mahan just gave to us, we'll put the same sort of directive out to the board that we did after our previous meeting, that if, you know, as you digest the information that we discussed tonight, if you have additional questions, send them to Dr. Malash. You can copy Lori and I on it, and we'll get as much information answered so that we can continue this dialogue at our board work session on the, I believe it's the 11th.
The 11th, correct.
Okay. So, Mrs. Sugars, and Dr. Malash, just procedurally, I know we want to wrap up and get to the committee meetings, but we, this is a public meeting, so we do have a public comment opportunity that we should jump to, correct?
We do. We also, if there's a need, we still, we also have the opportunity to go into an executive session. I don't know whether the board still feels that there is a need, Mrs. Freidell?
Um, I, in the interest of time, I would say we could table any items. I think that there was one item we had to discuss, which I think we can table for our next exec session on the 11th.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Mr. Green, the two public comments I have are related to the ERi studies. Would it be okay to hold those public comments until the next meeting, when we further discuss these items?
Technically, no. They have to be read at tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Very quickly, and then you can get on to your next meeting.
Yes. I'm sorry, couldn't tell who that was. Did someone just call me?
Sally.
Mrs. Freidell.
I think it was Sally Tong.
No, I did not.
All right.
Ms. Freidell?
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Sugars.
All right, I'll try to read these very quickly. The first one is from Rick Short. Let's assume the worst case that a bond vote isn't happening for another two or three years. I can't see the 14% unemployment rate a bond will ever get past in the next two years. How can anyone get excited about a bond when 23% to 28% of your community is having trouble providing food? First question, does the board want to spend $3.4 million on ADA fixing, on ADA, fixing dangerous ADA issues and fixing roofs, or no, or ADA safety issues and spend $500,000 on ADA and 2.9 on more vestibules while roofs leak? I know one of my calculations is correct, the number 28 foot looks to be close to correct because I measured it personally. The construction prints look to be around 28 feet by 60 feet. New construction usually costs 300 per square foot, so why does the Beck cost $549 per square foot? Pictures and specs from the west vestibule prove the walls are built of steel and drywall. Is Beck built with any bricks? I talked to my concrete guy, he said it's impossible for brickwork to cost up to $149 per square foot. When you compare the bond drawing to current drawings, how can a project cost jump $348,000 adding one toilet room and a front canopy? The wall specs look almost the same. It can't be fixture costs and brick construction, can't be driving up the cost of what's occurring. How can the same size drawing size up drive up costs $348,000? If you decide to stop building vestibules this year, you are going to tell your architects to start building vestibules outward and adjust ADA parking lots and budgets, each vestibule at $350,000 each. What does building outward mean? All you get is the new main office and the vestibule, everything else remains the same no matter what. It saves millions of dollars and can be used for replacement roofs and replacement HVAC. The new main office and vestibules will have its own thermal zone rooftop AC heating unit, putting a budget on the 14 remaining.
putting a budget on the 14 reaming, 14 reaming. Vestibules cost could save $3 million to $5 million to be invested in other things. Vestibule history costed $200,000, went to $575,000, then went east and west around $700,000 each. Your next three vestibule average cost will be $929,000 each, way over 300 per square foot construction cost. Why not tell your architects to just build a main office and budget $350,000 each and adjust ADA parking lots for building vestibules outward? Ask the ERI report to be done in 30 days. That underground report should be free, since they forgot to do it. Start planning to do the easy ADA fixes first. Order an ERI report on playgrounds, interior buildings on ADA to be done in 120 days. Does the district have a detailed five, 10, 15, and 20-year roof replacement cost sheet? Also the same for all HVAC replacement costs. How can you logistically plan future budgets when you have no estimated future cost? You can assume a bond isn't ever passing, because if you spend $575 to $923 on the vestibule, a bond will never pass. Does the district have a detailed long-term repair plan, assuming a bond never passes in Cherry Hill? Yes, I know the CHPS submits hundreds of pages to reports of the state of New Jersey for its long-term plans, but does it have a-- Okay, that's three minutes. Next comment, Jen Nadio, 224 North Madison Avenue, Cherry Hill. Special ed PTA sent out a petition to bring American Disabilities Act critical and necessary disparities in all 19 of the Cherry Hill School District buildings to the public's notice as of 11:00 a.m. today, August 3rd. There are 335 signatures and 54 comments that are asking the Cherry Hill School District to be ADA accessible. We have all sent, we have sent all of you the document. Most you saw it or signed it were very confused. Federal law is federal law. Why would we need a petition? Unfortunately, we need a petition to advocate for a vote no to the vestibules, so that funding can be allocated to ADA critical and necessary fixes. The district business administrator blamed the high amount of changes needed on the bond referendum failing, but ADA fixes need to always be completed before other projects. ADA is a federal law. Vestibules are not federally mandated. We also feel that CHBOE requests a new report from administration to have the architect investigate all schools and playgrounds. Deceptive members and so many families have been advocating for all 19 schools that have American Disabilities Act in force for over 20 years. All with disabilities who attend or visit Cherry Hill schools are denied equity and accessibility to many areas of the district. Students have not been able to attend their neighborhood schools due to the lack of accessibility. Students, staff, administrators, visitors, and parents with disabilities who do attend the schools don't have full access to front doors, playgrounds, elevators, parking, et cetera. Please follow along and give accessibility to all who visit the district. I believe I just received another comment. "How can you say all schools are accessible? That just isn't true. What is the pound pressure?"
Who was it from?
I'm sorry. Vinti Rose in 6 Fairhaven Avenue. "How can you say all schools are accessible? That just isn't true. What is the pound pressure for each door? If there isn't a curb cutout, how is it accessible? Space is not compliant, then school is not compliant." And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, again, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting so that the additional committee meetings can continue. Remember, the new committee structure is in place tonight, so, you know, the committees have changed. Mrs. Neary, can I please have a second to adjourn?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for getting together for this additional meeting, and I hope the rest of the committee meetings this evening go well.
And just a reminder, folks, we're going to go into CNI, and then PNL will follow, immediately following CNI.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.